Thank you. Good afternoon. How's everybody today? It's a beautiful day, isn't it? A lot of moisture. And welcome to a special city council meeting for Wednesday, April the 25th at 3:30. I'd like to call it now to order. Would you call the roll, please?
I will. Councilmember Dorito?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember? Councilmember Hammerick?
Here.
That one won't come out. Councilmember Wakes. Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here. Thank you. First of all, on the agenda, we have a proclamation proclaiming the April the 27th, which is Friday, as Arbor Day. I do, I did sign a proclamation of that effect. At 10 o'clock in Centennial Park, we'll have our annual tree planting. So if you'd like to come out, welcome. Of course, Canyon City is a tree city. We're quite proud of that, even though a few years ago, the frost took a toll on quite a lot of our trees. So they're out in force. But we're proud of our trees. We're planting a tree in City Park, in Centennial Park, at 10 o'clock Friday. So we're all welcome to go there. And I had that proclamation. The main course of the meeting this evening, this afternoon, is a consideration and discussion. We'd like to hear your thoughts regarding the electric service for our town. We'd like to limit it to one hour and maybe not repeat ourselves. I know that there's not a lot of people here, but we don't really need to hear it over and over again. But we're here to hear what you would like to say, or what you would like to talk about, or what we can do. Before we do that, I want to read, just to refresh, and I know you probably all know this, what we can do as a city and what the PUC does. Service area, that's the PUC. Deposits, PUC. Demand charges, PUC. Transmission cost adjustment, PUC. Reconnection fees, PUC. Electric rates, PUC. Determine the franchise determined by the city. Ability to set utility tax, the city. Access to utilities records, city. Transfer franchise, the city. Franchise fee, the city. The renewable portfolio, that's PUC. Restoration of service, city. Excavation and construction, city. Installation and maintenance, the city. So those are things that we can do, we can incorporate possibly in a franchise agreement. Also, I think the heart of things, the franchise agreement, as I understand it, is we are setting a lease agreement or an agreement with a public utility, use our right-of-ways, our alleyways and things like that. Sure, we would like to be able to control fees and things like that, too. But we can't. And that's another discussion that I would like to have. I haven't talked to the other councilpeople about this, and they have recall ability, by the way. They could kick me out. No, I'm just kidding. They could vote me out. I would like to talk to people. I know there's a strong, there's a committee that is formed, and I forget the name, to continue, because maybe what we would like to do with council, with the mayor, go to a PUC hearing and let them know what we think down here in Canyon City, in Fremont County, actually, because it's all Fremont County that we're really voting on here. So I'd like to keep that alive, if we can, and make it stronger, and maybe make it a little larger. And I know it's a big task to go to Denver, but it might be worth our while to do that. So I would like to, even after today, or after we do agree on some kind of franchise, whatever it is, I'd like to keep that alive. Okay? All right. So any comments from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would suggest that, that if there are common comments from any group or association of people, that they try to have a spokesperson provide those comments, rather than just hearing the same comment over again. If that's possible, if you all have, you know, something particular that you want to say, we're glad to hear it. But if there's, if there's a spokesperson that can speak for a group, that would be really great.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hammerick. Anyone else on council?
Mr. Mayor, I thought it might be prudent to have our attorney, Catherine Sellers. Catherine, if maybe just at the beginning, lay out legalities of the discussion of the franchise agreement, because there are some legal things as far as you as an attorney have for us, is what we can and cannot discuss in a public meeting.
So the, the current draft of the franchise, it's actually a franchise ordinance, that's the way the city does it, but that document currently is a, is not a public record and is confidential, and so that's why we don't release it to the public. In addition, those negotiations are confidential, and the direction you give me is confidential. I am bound by that duty of confidentiality to you, and so I'm not inclined to discuss those issues in a public setting with the public. And that's why maybe the public feels like there's a little pushback on discussing that specific item from the city. And so it's, it's to, you know, to allow for the parties to negotiate. But that being said, when the council is, I don't want to say happy, but ready, to put forth a franchise ordinance, that, that will be adopted pursuant to the normal ordinance procedures that you have. So you'll have your two meetings on that ordinance, and then a special election or an election will be called for the public to consider that. So not only will they have right at the council meeting to weigh in, but then ultimately the final vote at a, an election. So it, it won't be confidential forever, I guess is my point to that. It will turn into a public document and a public discussion of that document, so.
And we can take the information and the dialogue that we, we exchange with the public here at this meeting, and we can take that and probably into an executive session where we will talk to Catherine about, our attorneys, about what we'd like to see in that franchise agreement. That's where, that will be the proper place for us to take that.
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
That's the exact question I was going to ask.
Oh, good. You didn't talk together, then.
No.
Okay, I'm just...
We're just a team.
We're just a team.
I've talked to Ashley.
All right, well, let's open it up to people in the audience who'd like to come up and talk to us, give us your thoughts. So we need your name and hopefully an address, or just your name, whatever you're comfortable with.
Good afternoon, city council, Mr. Mayor, Attorney, Tony. Rhonda Scherrato, 94 Eagle Drive South, Canyon City, 81212. I actually appreciate John's comment, real quickly, that we come to you as an organized entity and not repetitive, just saying the same things over and over. So I do want to assure the council that we have had many meetings amongst ourselves and have prepared exactly that. We don't want to waste time either, so keeping it to an hour sounds fantastic. Also appreciate, and the sign still says Corey Hoffman, I apologize. It's Catherine?
It's Catherine, yeah. Corey's my partner.
Kathy. Thank you, Kathy. We do understand that until everything has been brought to council, that this is a confidential document that we don't have privy to at this time. Not a problem at all. The, the way that we'd like to start out, just really quickly, is we've brought to council our concerns in the form of an email that was sent from Emily. I want to make sure that council still has a copy of our original concerns that we sent, and everyone's read them and understands what we're bringing to you today. Is there any? Okay, so everyone's gotten that, is what I'm taking the heads to shake for. Okay, wonderful. In that spirit, then, I think my first question is going to be answered, which Ms. Kathy has already done so. We wanted to find out where council was at with taking that information, assimilating it, digesting it, talking about it. Has that happened at all? Where is council at with what we've presented so far? Because we don't want to be redundant.
We did have an executive session where their points were discussed, an executive session.
Okay, so some basic conversations happened.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we have to give, we had to give our attorney some kind of guidance on which way or what our thoughts were, on where to go initially to get that started. Like any contract, we have to put some meat on that. And yes, we've had that discussion.
Okay, fantastic. And again, in not trying to be redundant.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
I do have a question. On the email from Emily Tracy, is that the one dated March 5th? Is that correct?
I have one dated March 12th.
March 12th.
March 12th.
Would you like a copy?
I would like one.
Yeah, I think so.
I was going to say, I'd like one as well.
Do you have enough? You came prepared. Thank you, Buffy.
What's your date, March what?
It's the March 12th one, is the last of them.
Thank you.
Was there anyone after March, was there any emails after March 12? I think so.
Has city council seen the initial proposal from Attorney Kathy yet with the initial Black Hills, thank you, the Black Hills, have you, has city council seen the initial franchise agreement from Black Hills? The confidential one that we're working on?
Yeah, we gave them, we gave her direction on what we want to see on it.
Okay.
But we don't have, we still have plenty of room to put, to fill out and do things.
We don't know if you've met or not, so we're asking for that reaffirmation.
Yeah, I did, we met in the executive session.
With the attorney, and so you bought, okay, thank you, perfect.
Yes, yes.
Does that answer your question? Okay, fantastic. Then we have approximately six points that we'd like to make.
Okay.
Make?
Make?
Eight, I apologize, it's been amended. We have eight points that we would like to bring to council's attention to reiterate exactly what we believe that our area, our constituents are adamant, that we try to somehow with council fit into this franchise agreement. And I'm going to start with number one, which is the timeframe of the franchise offer. We are asking for a five-year contract. Now, the state statute is 10 to 15 years. We understand that. We are specifically asking for a five-year total contract with the concession, and because we're all on the same page here, so I'm not fighting you, or fighting Black Hills, our, our concession would be a 10-year contract with a five-year off-ramp. I don't think that I need to go into the reasons why, but we'll just state number one, that technology is moving way too fast to have a 15-year contract with no options before 15 years are up. So we are adamant about that timeframe. With, go ahead, Jim.
Is that your, is that your number one priority? Are these in priority order?
No, they are not in priority order. We hope that all eight of them will be addressed in the franchise agreement. What we hope to do is to give, on one hand, the demand that we'd really like, and then so we don't go back and forth, okay, we'll have a concession, we'll agree to this, in the, in the effort of time savings.
You do realize, in negotiation, and now you're talking with TVs running and microphones on and everything else, you understand negotiations, I'm sure.
I do.
Yeah, you just played your hand. Go on.
This isn't my hand in your hand, this is our hand.
I negotiate all my days of my life, that's what I do for a living, and you just played your hand. Go ahead.
That's point number one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Carol Dunn, 380 Barrett in Canyon City for the last 50 years, so I've, I'm pretty invested in this town. As any business or even a utility, they're all interested in being a good neighbor and an active member of the community. We feel that there needs to be a face of Black Hills in an accessible office here in Canyon City. You cannot go in and pay a bill in the office here, and that seems to be a way that the utility would be a good citizen to Canyon City. Also, the utility could show their concern for the business community by providing an access to a specialist who would be able to evaluate your utility bill, and also look at any energy savings at a business, or even a residential, resident might take advantage of. This way, a utility could provide outreach and really be a face in our community. And that's what I have to say about that right now, and I think that could be included in the franchise, is just something that Black Hills could, or any utility, could do to be a good outreach in the community.
You switched a little bit. Did you, what point is that on, is that on this sheet that you gave us?
I don't think so. We've got some new ideas. We've been talking every week, almost. So that's not, that's not on that sheet. That was not meant to be a handout. The email was not meant to be. We just wanted to make sure that everybody had seen that.
Oh, okay.
So Ms. Dunn, what are you saying, are you requesting two positions, a position, like a cashier position that's accessible at all business hours, and then a specialist for bill consultation?
Right, and the specialist wouldn't necessarily have to be in the office, just to have somebody available, that if you went into the office or called the office and said, "I'm really concerned about my bill, how can I make it less? What does this mean? What are these fees?", that someone would be able to address those issues. And actually come out to a business and look at your lighting, look at your, you know, your energy use, and, and maybe help you to lower it and, and help you and the utility at the same time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Can I?
Mr. Meisner, go ahead.
I just want to make a statement that, relative to Carol's statement, just keep in mind that the city of Pueblo asked for a consultation from Black Hills relative to their streetlight situation, and that turned out to be a fiasco, which winds up costing the city thousands of dollars, because Black Hills made an error. And now they're just saying, "Well, that was our fault, but let's move forward and charge you more." So we need to be careful in terms of having that professional consultation available, and assuming that it's right, and that it's going to benefit the customer, because the city of Pueblo would not agree with you on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, I'm Kathy Worthington, I live at 66 Blue Grouse Drive, and I'm here to present or ask a favor as far as being able to have the city ask for aggregate data information from Black Hills. And we're talking about how many in a certain rate case, or rate class, all the different classes, how many commercial, how many low, small business, commercial, how large industrial, and things that way. Because what that does, from an environment, from an energy-efficient perspective, it allows experts to be able to look at the different rate cases and be able to help determine things that could be done for that rate case, not necessarily through the city, but it does give information back to the city that allows you to provide leverage when you are dealing with Black Hills. And this doesn't mean rates or anything that way, but it does help as far as being able to point out energy-efficient programs or so forth that are available, and also be able to give that information to the different customers within Fremont County. So I thought I'd, that's something that would be very helpful to have that breakdown. And as part of that, it would also be behoove you that can be in a franchise, is to ask what they call "as-built". And what that means is that when the utility installs underground, overhead, any new facilities, that they provide in a timely manner to the city planning department, or the city as a whole, what these designs are for mapping purposes and things that way. The advantage to the city for that is to be able to look at something, if you're looking at a piece of ground or something that you're interested in perhaps putting a new park, or if you're doing something, you know right then and there what facilities are either in the way, or you need to work around. And that's something that the utility should provide to you without any issue whatsoever. And those are called "as-built". So, any questions on that, or anything I can help you with?
When you're talking about aggregate data, is that something that you're wanting us to get now, or is that something that accumulates over time so we can do something with it?
Sooner the better, in a sense. It doesn't mean it has to be in the franchise, per se, but it definitely would help to be able to, that's something you, as a city, have the right to ask for right now. And so you can get that, and it allows experts to be able to look at that and be able to help the customers and the citizens to be able to become more efficient in their daily usage of electricity.
I have a question for the "as-built". Are you suggesting that we request, that they give us that information for every single new build, or perhaps just upon city request?
Generally, when, I would say that you want every "as-built" that's done. It may be something, say Greg has an overhead line that he has undergrounded, or something for his restaurant, but what you want is, you want the final design that was done through their engineering department and was actually installed, so that you have it for your mapping purposes. It makes your planning department, gives them happiness in the fact that they feel more included and know exactly what utilities are installed.
Mr. Hammerick?
Yes, Kathy, could you tell me again what, what the aggregate data exactly is? I, you know, if, if I was to ask a Black Hills representative for aggregate data, I wouldn't know how to explain it to you. No problem. Basically, we're looking for, how many residential customers do you have? What is the total aggregate usage of those customers? In other words, what's their KWH aggregate on either a monthly or a yearly basis? How many small commercial customers on that commercial rate do you have? What is their usage? What is their demand, if they're on a demand rate? Same with an industrial customer, which is probably like Portek or Wholesome. Now, you cannot ask for individual customer information, but based on a rate class, you can. They have what I always call the HIPAA rules of the utility business. We try to, they try to maintain as much privacy as possible, but you, as a city, can ask for that aggregate information in order to be able to plan better. And it probably can help your economic development people, too.
That was my next question to Ryan Stevens. Would that, would you find that information helpful to you? Could that be used?
May I ask a question?
Ms. Gonzalez?
Kathy, if we were to get that information, would it be helpful to look at it as, in five years, so, you know, every five years?
Absolutely, because like what we're seeing, a trend, is the fact that right now there's less commercial meters out there than there were, say, five years ago. Why is that? Does that mean that there's less customers? Or is the fact that they've maybe consolidated some of the meters that are on their property? Has there been a loss of business because of that? It, it gives you a lot of ability to be able to set trend lines and be able to see what's going on, to help the city become vibrant, as well as more economic growth and things that way. So it helps to provide a lot of information that can be broken down different ways.
And in that data, do they show which buildings or customers might have switched over to energy-saving components?
They, I'm guessing that they can tell you who, well, it would have, it would be based on rate classifications as to people that have taken advantage of, say, rebates or energy efficiency programs and things that way, but again, it couldn't be broken down by individual customer.
Okay.
And are these rebates and programs, are those ones that are offered by Black Hills?
Yes, they are. There are obviously some federal things, but frankly, I'm not as up to date on what's even still available on things that way. But what it does is, that would be also, and I'm going to step back into Carol's question about talking about a small business expert, is that it gives the small business the opportunity to call and say, "Okay, let's analyze my bills right now, and, you know, let's see what's going on. And then, okay, you're saying if I did this, and this, and this, to help make me more efficient, which also means me saving money, what rebates are out there to help me offset those costs? How many years would be my return on investment? That type of thing." So it allows a small business to be able to make educated decisions to help their bottom line.
Anyone else?
Do we have to have that in the franchise agreement for those businesses to be able to utilize that service?
No, not technically, but again, if it's written down, it means more. It's my perspective.
Okay.
Okay? I'll be back up, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Hi, I'm Beth Hart, thanks for having us again, I sure appreciate it. I know it can be a technical conversation. And that's Ted, he wants to get comfortable. I'm here to talk about the Clark land, and I know that you all have heard from us before on it, and that we would really like updates for you, reasonable, regular updates, presented to the council for the level of remediation that is happening there on that land. We are really hoping that the chemicals are cleaned up, that they will never get back into the river, that the mediation will go far enough in the ground and through all the soils that are there, so it never floods back into our waters. So an independent environmental assessment is kind of what we would really like the city to think about. Can this go into the franchise? Yes, it can. The other portion is that the city could use that land. The city has the right to, to provide its own generation. Now, this can include just about any type of generation, including renewables. The last thing I have for you is to kind of add to what Kathy had to say, is that there are actually a lot of CPACE loans going on right now. I don't know if you all have, know that that's going on out there, but these, it's CPACE, and they are loans for energy efficiency and renewable energy. And people are definitely taking advantage of those loans, especially commercial.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm back again. Because I also have, know that you guys were really concerned about outages, and I'm concerned about outages, too. It's not only irritating and really upheaving to a resident, but it's also really bad for a business. I don't know if, I'm not an expert on utility systems, but I know that perhaps infrastructure might be an issue that may need updated, but there's got to be a way that a utility can let residents, businesses know exactly how long, well, approximately, how long an outage is going to take. Whether you're in the West End, it'll be longer, you understand that, but just so you kind of can plan your life around this outage, which is really an inconvenience. There could also be, as I understand it, a, something in the franchise that people, businesses could be reimbursed for outages lasting X number of hours, and that could be looked at in any, in a franchise. Also, as I have experienced over the years, an outage can cause a spike in demand. When all the freezers go out at the same time and come back on at the same time, you've got a spike. And if you're going along with your energy savings, that you've changed out your lights, and you've made sure that the freezers are coming on at different times in your normal sense of business, but during an outage, if they all come back on, you're going to have a spike. And if you exceed your 50 kilowatt usage for 15 minutes, then a business is charged that high rate of 50 kilowatt-hours, even if you're actually at a lower usage for the rest of the month. And those levels will be in place for 12 months, no matter what you do. They're set at a 50 kilowatt usage for 12 months. And that, that gets really frustrating, and the outages are a big cause of spikes, no matter what kind of majors you take in your business. No matter what kind of majors you take in your business, you can't prevent those. So I'd like you to take a look at, at some of those ideas for, in the franchise as well.
Okay, just a minute.
Questions?
Questions?
Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Carol.
Although we understand that the PUC is who determines the demand rate, the rates period, there is something that Black Hills can do to incentivize small business and new business, and that is to honor and give a concession. Once a business is coming into Canyon City, the, there, there needs to be an incentive. And I know that council is wanting to incentivize new businesses to come into our community, setting up shop. We want to see Black Hills give back to new businesses. For example, we'll just use my business. I open up Prospectors RV Resorts. Here's what your demand rate's going to be, and, and I want the information upfront. Here's what your demand rate is going to be. Here's your deposit amount. Here is your penalty if you get shut off and the reconnection fee. All of those items need to be given to businesses, number one, upfront. I will tell you, when I turned on my electricity at my business, I had no idea that there was going to be a three-month deposit put upon me two and a half, three years after I was in business. So I, we want the information upfront, whether it's on the phone, when you're standing, when you're talking to that representative and you're starting your, your services. Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, your penalty's going to be $15 reconnect fee. It's going to be this amount of a deposit. And then second, so that's number one. And then secondly, for that new business, my example is going to be for the first six months that you're in operation, Prospectors RV Resorts. We're going to charge you all of this, and then we're going to give you 50% off of your electricity bill for six months. We want to help you for your first year. We want Black Hills to pay back to this community and incentivize small businesses to come here. Mr. Taco Bell, Mr. KFC, Mr. whoever on downtown, here's what we'd like to give back to this community so that you'll come and open up your business here, and Black Hills can absolutely regulate that. Thank you.
Questions?
Maybe Catherine can answer this. I think each one of those concessions has to be PUC-approved, is it not?
It's definitely PUC-controlled.
I think Pueblo's faced with that at times.
Yeah.
Where each one of those concessions that they make relative to Black Hills then has to be approved by, by the PUC.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure whether the PUC would really want, if, let's say, your scenario where they give you like a break for a couple of months or something like that. I'm not sure the PUC is going to weigh in and say, no, Black Hills, you have to charge them the full amount. If Black Hills voluntarily does that, I'm not sure the PUC is going to step in and say, no, you can't do that. The issue is whether Black Hills is going to voluntarily do that. I don't think the PUC is necessarily going to require it of them unless there's some kind of issue.
That's a great answer. I like that answer.
I have another follow-up question to that. It sounds like what Rhonda's asking for is for requirement that they have to give information upfront. Is that something that can even be negotiated in a franchise agreement?
Probably not, not typically, but I guess, I guess my, and I don't know whether the PUC really gets involved in that kind of thing either. I'm not sure there's any type of regulation that says, you know, within 24 hours of receiving a request for service, you have to provide all this information. I'm, I'm going to guess that that's probably not anywhere. That's just a guess. I'd have to look at the PUC rules to see if they're governing that kind of customer service, so.
Okay.
And I think, I want to follow up on that because I think that, that part of that is a customer service issue. If, when you're setting up your electricity, let's say we're setting up a cellphone. Typically, they go through each, you know, if, if your phone is shut off, it'll be $25 reconnect fee. And if that's not happening, I mean, that's, that sounds like it's a customer service issue.
I agree, Ms. Gonzalez. I think it's a customer service issue, and it goes right along with the ability for small business to contact Black Hills and say, I'm confused, I need help, can we do this? I, I don't think it's asking too much to say upfront when you sign up your electricity, for your electricity. This is what you will be looking at. Preparedness is half of our battle here. Had I known it was going to be a $15,000 deposit after three years of my service, I might have been able to save that money, I might have been able to prepare. Along with that is the ability to make payments on that. We would like to ask Black Hills, yes, it's set by the PUC, but that doesn't mean that you can't say it's okay to make payments on that. We want payment arrangement ability.
Oh.
Thank you. Payments are so vital in, in just our demographic right now. You have a small house that got their electricity shut off, and they know they've got to come up with $50 deposit, $15 reconnection fee and that month's bill. If they can make payments on that, that would be stellar. The reconnection fee, I don't know, did you say that was a PUC issue, Mr. Mayor? Reconnection fees?
Yes.
That is a PUC issue? Okay. Thank you.
I think that the new proposal in front of the PUC from Black Hills that's still pending has a plan in there for obviously reducing those fees, but then also offering different types of financing for, or payment options for those fees.
We didn't know that.
As I read the information.
Thank you.
But that's still pending approval from PUC.
And Jim, where did you find that information?
He had his lights shut off.
In one of the many public articles.
Okay, so it's fact? Not necessarily. That's my point.
Depending on what you want to believe.
Any other questions?
Just so I can, so, and I will fully admit that the PUC's website is a black hole of confusion, but there is a current rate case going on, which I believe is what Jim's referring to. And if you really have a free day.
Oh, yeah.
Which I'm sure you do, you can go and read everything that's going on in that rate case. All the filings are online, so, but it's time-consuming and it'll take you a little bit to understand completely what's going on.
Oh, it sounds like something Councilman Hamrick's really good at digesting.
And that whole process is multifaceted, I guess. And, and I mean, there's, there's the tax refund, there's the, there's tons of things that they're trying to address. So it's not one specific issue that you can look at. There's, there's multiple things that P, that, that Black Hills is proposing coincidentally to PUC. It involves deposits, rates, different charges, all of the things that Pueblo and us are addressing or trying to address, they're addressing in different versions, but none of that has been approved and actually been, not necessarily rejected, but the PUC has told them initially, you need to go back and do some other changes.
Good to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Buffy McFadden, 320 Harrison here in Canyon City. Hello, council.
Hi, Buffy.
Hello. I, I'm going to bring these up probably when I finish, but I did bring you a copy of the original 1992 Canyon City ordinance, or ordinance for the franchise. I brought you a copy of the most recent Florence-approved ordinance in 2018, and I made copies of the 105, 106 populated community of the town of Hooper's franchise. And Hooper.
Yeah, we have that. We've analyzed it.
Did you?
Yeah, we have. We analyzed Pueblo, Lafayette, Hooper, and Durango, and you could see that if you'd like. We all got that.
Good. And Hooper is in one of my most favorite counties. It's Alamosa County. I want to start off by saying, thanking Councilmember John Hamrick for coming to the meeting that we had with the county commissioners. And I'd also like to thank County Commissioner Dwayne McFall for being here today as well because communication is the key to success. One of the reasons I'm excited about this franchise agreement, we keep hearing there may be a sale of Black Hills or, or a change, and if anything happens going into the future, anything that's in the franchise agreement for the length of the franchise agreement, if approved by the citizenry, will be maintained. So that's why I think it's incredibly important at this time that we have this opportunity to lead our community forward in a way that Pueblo didn't get the chance to as maybe wisely back almost 10 years ago. I have a couple of points that I've been tasked with. One is ratepayers refunds. Whenever there's a refund for ratepayers in the city of Canyon City, that they would be returned within a specified amount of time. I'm sure that's negotiable. My other favorite, and it's very atypical, I've never heard of it before, but why not in Canyon City and why not now? That for every five years of any approved franchise agreement, that the Black Hills annual stockholder meeting be held here in the city of Canyon City. We have several tourist organizations that the city and county contribute both to that could work together. I would also suggest that Black Hills assist in making sure that runs successfully by establishing a budget that would work to help facilitate that stockholders' meeting here in Canyon One other point, having worked in the dirt and pipe utility business for a company that put all the overhead electrical underground at Fort Carson, going back to ASBILs. ASBILs not, updates of ASBILs give you an idea of how old the infrastructure is and how they've been updating through the system, but it's also very good for those partners that use the right-of-way of the city for other utilities. So maybe it's not a direct bury concept, maybe you need stack conduit to fit through a corridor, and having those ASBILs assist all the others that utilize those right-of-ways. So it's something not only to think about for this particular franchise, but anyone else like your cable that franchises with the city of Canyon City. And President, or excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if you want more, I don't live very far away. I can come make more copies.
I know where you live.
Okay, good.
Throw him on his porch.
I could.
You could.
And, and I'm going to point out one other point, that no one in this particular group is being paid. We're all doing this with our own time and money. So the only dog we have in this fight is to, to make sure Canyon City and those residents who don't get to vote on the franchise in unincorporated Fremont County have a voice at the table on this franchise agreement. And Mr. Mayor, as you'll see, you'll sign it, and forever and long that lasts, your name will be on it.
That's right, buddy.
And hopefully, unlike 1992, we'll remember where we have it.
The, I'd just like to make the point that depending on your definition of paid, we may fit in that same boat. Thanks, John.
Yes, Mr. Meisner?
Oh, no.
Okay.
But I do have a comment that's not necessarily directed at her.
Yes, thank you, Buffy. Go ahead.
There was an article in the April 7th edition of the Daily Record, an article from Mr. Vance Crocker from Black Hills Energy, and I quote, "Effective April 1st, we lowered the deposit requirement from a 90-day average bill to a 30-day average bill. Reconnection deposits can now be spread out over four months, making the cost more manageable." End quote.
All I can tell you is that's what was printed.
Well, I'd like to say that we saved the best for last, but you're stuck with me. So we appreciate all your time, first of all. You know, like when you're saying that we're not paid, trust me, you're not paid nearly enough, and we recognize that. And thank you for the newest member. Thank you for sacrificing your time because all of you do a lot for the city, and we appreciate it. So just wanted you to be aware of that. One thing, the last thing I think I want to bring up is the fact that, you know, with the county commissioner here and all of you here as council people, is that we're not an island here in Fremont County. And when we're dealing with Black Hills, it's one of those to where, hey, we all know I worked for a big utility, and we're not God either. And, but the thing is, is that working with your neighbors, whether that be Pueblo, whether that be Woodland Park, whether that be whomever, work together because, let me, voice of experience, you bring a lot to the table and you can sort of put the feet to the fire, so to speak, in having your voice heard. So I just want to encourage, especially, you know, with us having had the opportunity to speak to the county, although they're not involved in the franchise agreement, they are, of course, representing Black Hills customers. And so working together, and it just makes everything better. It improves all of our knowledge, and I think that really helps us all in dealing with issues such as this. Because I'm the first one to admit, you have a lot of issues, and a new electric utility agreement or franchise may not, may not be high on your priority list, but it does have ramifications, obviously, over all the years that it's going to take place. So anyway, thank you so much for listening to us. We also hope that you will get, you know, keep us, we do have a little bit of knowledge around here, and we are willing to answer any questions you have, you know, and we do want to try and speak for the general public in keeping you as informed as possible also. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Meisner.
This is directed at Catherine, I think. The last item on here mentions an option A and a, or a Plan A and a Plan B, which I don't know that that's realistic relative to council passing an ordinance with options.
Yeah, and I think that was more, don't worry about that. We've discussed a lot since then. That, that does bring up the idea that, you know, there's no rush on the vote for the general public. So it's one of those to where, sure, Black Hills would love for you to sign on the dotted line tomorrow, but as far as doing what's best for the city, and I'm sure, you know, Catherine can speak from her experience with other municipalities and so forth, is that you want to make sure it's good for the city and good for, especially the citizens of that city. So there's no rush in putting this to a vote, and that would be one thing we ask, is just to make sure that you feel like all of your i's are dotted and your t's are crossed before we go to the ordinance piece of it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all the information that you brought to us today. It was very informative and well thought out.
Hi, thank you for being here today. Donna Murphy, 241 Glenmore Road. This morning, I was talking to my 91-year-old father in Sturgeon Bay, and he said that over 100 years ago, when Sturgeon Bay got electricity, nobody would provide them with electricity so they have a municipal electricity. And he said they pay some of the lowest rates in the state of Wisconsin. So I just thought that was kind of interesting, so.
Yes, sir.
I would like one gentleman in the audience to stand up and, so we could chat with him. Mr. Dwayne? Move forward there, buddy.
Dwayne, I did warn you on the way back from Salida.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate that.
It's out of my control.
My question's just kind of simple. I mean, the, the challenge is, is that the, the agreement gets approved by the voters or the citizens of Canyon City, but then the service area encompasses a much wider area. Has the commissioners discussed, or are they, is there any discussion from the commissioners in terms of how do we involve, I guess involve, or keep your county residents concerned? How, how are we going to fold that into the formula? Is there any been discussion there?
Well, we had a meeting with these folks, was that last week? Time kind of runs together, as you know. But they informed us of a lot of what they brought up to you today, as well as probably what they brought up to you before. And I've been referring everybody to the mayor because of this.
I know them all.
So, no, it's, it's kind of interesting because, and this is me personally, and I think the other commissioners as well, but you guys have the franchise. I think that we ought to be able to have the voice along with you guys to help back anything up that goes. The PUC, for one thing, I don't know how many of us can make it up there, but I think that would be a, a big statement, whether it be from the city or the county, however, because we all are kind of affected by this. But there is definitely something that we should be able to contribute as, as well, even if it's just the voice, because we are affected just like the people in the city.
And I would just like to state that we, we are glad that you're here, and we recognize that we have a responsibility as the Canyon City Council to listen and take into consideration the voice of the entire the voice of the entire county. And we also do have a meeting scheduled with the county commissioners on May 7th, and on the agenda will be to talk about Black Hills service issues, and so that we can, we can work together and have that conversation. That's very important to have. And perhaps-
Could that answer your question, Mr. Meisner?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Hammack.
And not for you, Dwayne, thank you. Thank you for coming. I really appreciate you being here. But Steve, perhaps, if you don't mind, I do have a question for Steve, maybe, that you can help us with.
Fine.
Steve, my question is, what is the process of municipalization? You know, as I understand it, it can be a fairly lengthy, it can be a fairly costly process. I did read what you submitted to us with some interest. And, you know, the issue for Canyon City is that, is that we don't have deep pockets, you know. I mean, we might be able to municipalize right after I buy a Google, you know, or something like that. But the, it really doesn't seem like it's within the realm of possibility for us. Could you discuss that process, or share with us a little bit of what you've seen over the years in that realm?
Sure. What I'd actually like to do is to invite you to a meeting, May 8th, down in Pueblo. We're bringing in a guy who wrote the feasibility study for a community called Winter Park, Florida. Winter Park has about 16,000, 18,000 meters. It's more like 30,000 people. It's about twice the size of Canyon. In 2001, they decided they wanted to break away. In 2003, they had a vote to do just that. In the interim, they had a feasibility study and a number of other dialogues and fight back and forth between the proponents and the opponents of breaking away and forming their own municipal electric utility. They did not take charge of operations until 2005. It cost them a bundle, $40 million, and yet they were able to arrange not only the financing for that, but to pocket profits over time. So their rates are actually now lower than the former electric utility that was providing them, the former investor-owned utility. So they'll be in town on May 8th. They'll be speaking to the Electric Utility Commission down in Pueblo from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. The fellow who's leading that discussion is Jerry Warren. He's been a consultant in 20, count them, 20, municipalization efforts, many of which, by the way, have not succeeded, but definitely he led the best one that we can highlight, and it's a fine one. The soup to nuts details will be delivered there, I think, as well as, there's a town hall meeting that evening from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. And not only will Jerry Warren be there, but the third party that actually then ran the utility for the locals, they didn't take over operations, there was a third party that ran it, and they're called NCO Services. Eventually, they handed that over to the city. So the city of Winter Park, Florida now runs their own municipal electric, and they have 18 employees, and they're very happy. They've undergrounded more of their wires than had been done previously. In Florida, undergrounding is everything for system reliability. They're no longer, they are in Hurricane Alley, and that, and they're now at 60% undergrounded. And with funds from revenues, they are under, they'll have the rest of it undergrounded by the year 2026. They're dedicating $3 to $4 million of revenues, paid by bill payers, to pay for those costs. So in terms of a process, that's just one example. There are 20 or 30 that have been done, anywhere from tribes in New Mexico to communities like Winter Park. There's one last night that voted 7 to 0 in Utah to break away. That's West Lake City, I believe it is. It's a large community on the west side of the Salt Lake City metro area. It's about 130,000 people, and the town council voted last night. I can circulate to you a notice about that. But they voted last night to study their alternatives, and they've got a team that they're partnering with to do just that.
Okay.
I will add one final point. In terms of our group, we did one little bit of research, and we found that the tab for the city of Canyon, Canyon City's both residence and commercial, is about, it's between $17 and $18 million a year that you pay your electric utility. There are actually some considerable savings in there if you did go to a municipal, and I'd be glad at some point to discuss those. But frankly, if you just come to listen to Jerry Warren on the 8th, I think you can, you can hear those at some, in some detail.
Okay, real quickly, how do they generate their electricity? Just real quick, just-
Yeah, they buy it, they buy it on the open market.
Okay, then they don't generate.
Yeah, you don't, Pueblo doesn't have to buy it from the PAGS generating stations. They can buy it on the open market.
So they buy, they buy it in a similar form to like a cooperative?
Co-op.
Well, yes, but no. There, in northern Colorado, there are four munis that buy their power from Flat River Power Authority. That's much the same way that the REAs buy their power from Tri-State. But in this day and age, you can actually go on the market, and in Colorado, you can at least make bilateral agreements where you can purchase power from the market and not have to buy it from XL or from, you know, Black Hills, you can buy it from a third party. Those are usually contractual agreements. An REA that just broke away was setting up 10- to 25-year agreements for purchased power. So it's doable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're getting close to the hour.
Four minutes.
We got four minutes.
Get your hammer up.
We got a hammer.
Kathy Madonna, 1536 Grand Avenue, Lincoln Park, Canyon. Getting back to what Dwayne and Jim and what Steve just mentioned, EUC, Electronic-
Electric Utility-
Electric Utility Commission that is comprised of city council, county commissioners.
President, Colonel, and Secretary.
I think that would be a great fit for what we're trying to do here. Thank you.
Okay. We're done. Any questions of council?
I just wondered if Councilman Hammack wanted to, maybe you did a lot of extensive studying comparison of franchise agreements to our current one. Do you have any feedback that you want to give?
The, so I did review the Canyon City franchise agreement, the Pueblo franchise agreement, Lafayette, Hooper, and Durango. And there are, there are, some of the other agreements have some very interesting provisions in them that are beneficial to the cities involved. One of the provisions, for instance, is that the utility agrees to a certain percentage of their fees that go into an undergrounding fund. Our agreement does not have that. That's certainly something that is interesting. The, our agreement also has some benefits that other cities don't even begin to touch. And it's, and it's really astounding to me, at least in how I read the agreement, what some of the beneficial clauses we have in our agreement. And I wouldn't really like to talk about those in open session. Those are, that's more to be reserved, I think, for our executive session. But there was, it was pretty interesting to go through the exercise. I'm learning a lot. You know, thank you for the opportunity for learning. But it's certainly, it's certainly interesting. And I did provide that summary of some of the provisions that I think are common. There's a lot of provisions I didn't include that certain cities ask for, and they could be included on this, but I did try to keep it, you know, two pages.
And Catherine, where do we go from here?
Well, we're currently in negotiations with Black Hills. That's an ongoing process. If you heard things you want to discuss at a later date, we can certainly do that in executive session. I'm happy to do that at the next council meeting on May 7th, or regular council meeting.
Okay, I'll need your comments and what you wanted to, executive session, our options are executive session. We really want to discuss it at an open council, open council meeting?
No.
No.
Not the franchise agreement.
So the executive session they were proposing was after the-
Regular meeting.
Got it.
I just, sorry, you have a meeting next week. I was trying, when I said the next meeting, I wanted to differentiate to your regular meeting on the 7th.
We have one next week, too.
We already have an executive session scheduled for May 7th for some other items.
We do.
We could add a Black Hills franchise agreement to that.
I won't be able to attend that meeting on the 30th, so Cory will be here. So if we want to talk Black Hills, my suggestion is the 7th.
Do you want to do the 7th or the 30th? Well, it's all over my, everybody's mine. About 30?
I would not suggest a 30th.
Okay, we'll do the 7th.
But if we, I think the next step needs to be to refine the discussion that we had initially in terms of, here's the encompass of the agreement, and just find out where we're at in terms of that agreement, and have some brief discussion with council in terms of what other items of interest does council have that we would potentially want to inject into that agreement. And get some refinement of, for example, there may be three items out of this list that council says, okay, we're gonna take those three items and try to incorporate that into the agreement, or we're gonna take 10 items. But we need to give Catherine some direction in terms of step two before we progress too far. I say progress or rigorous.
Okay, got it. Any other questions of council?
Can we do that in an executive session?
It would have to be an executive.
Yeah, okay. So that's maybe what we need to focus on.
So are we good with May 7th, then?
Yeah, that's fine.
So I think we already have executive sessions scheduled for that date, is that right? So we're just gonna add this to the agenda.
So basically, it'll be a late night.
It'll be a long day.
Are we doing it at 5:00 or-
Yeah, you have your meeting at 5:00, and then you have two executive sessions.
So we have a meeting with Dwayne at 5:00 on May 7th, and the other commissioners, where we'll be, one of the things we'll be discussing that day, among others, would be the, well, wouldn't be the franchise agreement, but it would be-
So the franchise agreement is only, only affects within the municipal boundary, so.
Yeah, so we'll be talking about Black Hills service issues with the county at 5:00. Then we'll have council meeting at 6:00. And then after that's over, we go into executive session. And we already have a couple of items on that executive session, and we can add on Black Hills.
I believe you have one, and we can add on Black Hills.
Okay. So it will be a little bit of a later night that night, but sometimes I prefer just to get it all done in one-
Okay. What's the other session, what's the other item for the 7th on executive?
What was the other one on the 7th, Catherine?
Uh, oh, I just drew a blank. What was the other?
I know, we have a lot on going.
Oh, negotiations with the depot.
Oh, the train depot.
Train depot, yep.
That's on the 7th?
Yes. Sorry, I drew a blank.
Okay, we're running out of time here.
I know. But I would suggest, the flame's not gonna go out on this whole thing. I would, I would think that a later session of council is where we could do it as an executive session exclusively on Black Hills. I mean, we're talking about a discussion that could be an hour and a half, two hours.
But they weren't in a hurry, so why should we be?
That's, well, I'm not suggesting, yeah, but I mean, we've got time to work on this. And it would be nice that if council could come with each of our individual ideas in terms of what we think is important, so that when we sit down with Catherine, we're not beginning a discussion, we can give her direction in terms of what each of us believe is important. And we've got time to do that.
Okay.
Should we wait until the 21st? Is that the-
I don't even know that we need to set it. I think when, when each of us are ready, we could say, okay, let's do an executive session specifically for Black Hills and move forward.
I say, then, if you want some more, because I feel like I can have that prepared by the 7th, but if you want to wait until the 21st, we can, but I think let's get it moving. We, I mean, we do have to get things while we have this fresh in our minds and our research is up to date, let's.
The 21st.
Well-
Whatever council's flavor is.
We have some scheduling issues, I think. From what I'm hearing, we're not gonna do it the 7th, but maybe we'll set a date between the 7th and the 21st. We have, Cory and I, I'm out of town that day, to be perfectly frank, so we'll have to work out another date for you guys.
It doesn't have to be at a regular council meeting. We call an executive session and go in that.
I agree.
So, okay.
Okay.
My point is, we all know how four-hour sessions go, between a 5:00 meeting, a 6:00 council, and another executive session. By the end of the night, we're gonna be throwing pizzas at each other. And-
We won't get anything.
And the point is-
So we're gonna have Tony?
This is not gonna go away.
Councilman Meisner, I would never waste pizza like that, in fairness.
It's, I think we need to have some urgency on it, but it's not something that has to be done tomorrow.
Okay, how about the 16th or the 23rd of May?
Well, whatever date we choose, I would ask council, each individual council member, if we can, to, as you say, Councilman Meisner, prepare our list of the things that we would like to see. And the sooner we can do that, actually, I think the better, you know. And if we get it all, if we can do it sooner, I think it's better.
Okay, that, of course.
You can always submit it to me for the meeting, and then I, not running on the fly in the meeting, giving you direction, and then we can go through everything at the meeting if that works.
Okay. Let's do that. Let's send it to Catherine, and then we'll set it for May 16th.
I'm not available at 16th.
I'm not either.
[laughing]
Traveling that week.
I leave the 16th through the 22nd, which means we can't be.
23rd?
That works.
May 23rd?
No. Sorry.
Okay.
When we coordinate it, we can-
Yeah, we'll coordinate it.
Let's coordinate it.
[inaudible]
Apparently, yeah.
Fall as fellas. We may just have to go to May 7th just out of scheduling.
All right. So we send our, to Catherine. I'm gonna hold you accountable. And you'll stand in the corner if you don't.
I'm already in the corner.
All right. Okay. Everybody done? Or adjourned? Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.